It's now 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Lancaster Plan Commission is now in session. Mr. Burkey will offer the invocation, Mr. Jacobs will lead us in the pledge. Your feet please stand.
Father, we're so thankful, Lord, that you are in our lives. We pray, Lord, that you would watch over this meeting tonight, that you would guide it, and, Lord, help us to have an uncommon wisdom tonight, a wisdom that comes from you. And, Lord, help us to do all things that would be honoring and glorifying to you. I pray that we work together as a citizenry, as a commission, as a staff, to do the things that you would want to have accomplished in our city. For we know your will is perfect, and in these things we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Larry Burkey.
Here.
Jonathan Irvin.
Here.
Dana Haycock.
Here.
Dan Jacobs.
Here.
Raj Malley.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandy Smith.
Yeah.
Chairman James Voss.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of ten minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers are limited to two minutes each for the early speaking. Do we have any early cards, Mr. Ludiki?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Any person who would like to address the Plan Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time such item is discussed by the commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the chambers as well as here on the front table at your right, our left. First item is our consent calendars, approval of minutes, and those minutes have been deferred to the next regular meeting. The next item is continued public hearing, item two. Item two is a conditional use permit 0719 and tentative tract map number 70238. So without objection, public hearing is open. And we have received a letter from the applicant indicating they accept the conditions, but I suspect some of the members would like to hear a staff report. So if you'd please give us a report, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Chairman Voss and Commissioners, as you can recall, the project was extended, uh, continued on May 18th, 2009 to allow the applicant to work with staff regarding the following items. There were six different items. The first one was guest parking availability, trash dispenser location on trash day, additional recreational amenities, clarification of, on the 20-by-20 garage free of utilities and storage availability. Number five was the walkability and traffic on Lancaster Boulevard, and number six was confirmation, a confirmation statement of single ownership in the CCNRs. Item number one, which is the guest parking availability, the site plan has been revised to address the Commissioner's request to increase the amount of guest parking spaces. The revised site plan shows 33 off-site parking spaces, 11 onsite parking spaces adjacent to the park, for a total of 44 guest parking spaces, five more spaces than required by the municipal code. Item number two, trash dispenser locations. The, again, the site plan was redesigned by providing ballbouts adjacent to private driveways on the interior streets. The ballbouts basically prohibit parking adjacent to the curb, and this design would provide a location for the trash dispensers to prevent on-street parking conflicts. Typically, I think the ballbouts are about 20 feet in length, and they are located on either side of the driveways on the interior streets. Item number three of concern was the recreational area. And the applicant has increased the size of the common open space from 1.7 to 1.9 acres. They have added a 2,777 square foot recreational room with an enclosed pool. In addition, each unit would be provided a rear yard patio, not a patio cover, but just the patio base. On item number four, I think what was in question was the garage size. The minimum garage size is a clear 20-by-20 for each single-family home, clear of utilities and, um, within that garage. In addition, in response for storage, the applicant is providing a large storage shelf within the garage. Item number five, the project provides pedestrians the ability to walk to various locations within the project on the interior sidewalks, and it's basically designed so the units next to the interior streets are facing out towards the street so there's visibility. As for the traffic flow eastward of the project, since the roads are unpaved, it's unlikely that there will be a significant flow of traffic on these streets. And lastly, item number six, the city attorney has indicated that owner-occupied tenure cannot be imposed by the city, so we didn't add that into the CCNRs. That pretty much takes care of the six items that the commission had questions on, and the staff therefore believes that, is recommending that the commission approve conditional use permit 0719 and tentative tract map number 70238, subject to the proposed conditions and modifications proposed by the applicant. You, I believe you have the conditions, which also include the revisions of the elevations prior to building permit issuance. If you want, you can turn that, we can look at the elevations. We feel the elevations are a little bit plain, and the council is pushing for 360-degree architecture, and therefore we're requesting that the applicant come back to staff and work out a better architectural treatment on those, on the plans. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. There may be some. Ms. Smith?
Did you say that, that it was decided that the city cannot impose, that it be owner-occupied for any period of time?
That's correct.
Okay. Where, where does that come from? Does that come from, like, a homeowners association? Could they impose that, or you can't speak to that?
Yeah, we really didn't look into, I don't believe there's any problem with that type of a restriction being imposed, just as between private owners, but we didn't specifically look at that issue. What we looked at is the, specifically whether the city can impose that, that requirement or that restriction in this context, and that raises a number of legal issues ranging from constitutional issues to questions as to whether it's even a valid exercise of the city's police power, as well as a number of other issues. And courts generally, generally speaking, courts have not upheld such restrictions when they've been imposed by cities.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Haycock?
Um, we, we were, we made a visit yesterday morning to the site in Santa Clarita that was built by the same builder, and we spoke to one of the residents, and he indicated that, as far as he knew, all the, all the units in that project were owner-occupied, and he felt that, that as far as he knew, that was a condition of purchasing the units. So at some point, it sounded to us as if that must have been decided somewhere along the line. Is there some way we could research that a little more fully, or could we make, could the staff work with the builder and make some kind of an agreement?
I suppose it could be researched to see whether or not those were, you know, that was imposed in that particular case as, as a condition by the city. That, of course, doesn't speak to the enforceability of such a restriction. You could impose the restriction this evening. The enforceability of it is a completely separate issue, and the liability that the city may incur as a result of that condition is a completely separate issue from the just sort of raw ability to do it. So I, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if other cities have done it. In fact, I know other cities have done it because the issue has been litigated, and it's been litigated in the context of other cities having imposed similar conditions, and the courts refusing to uphold those conditions. And, uh, but, I mean, certainly, certainly it could be looked at to see if in that particular case it was imposed by the city as a condition. In terms of working out an agreement with the developer, I suppose you can express your desire to the developer, if the developer was willing to impose such a restriction voluntarily, you know, that's probably not a problem. What I'm primarily concerned with is it being imposed as a condition, and the developer being required to restrict occupancy to, to owners. That's, that's primarily the concern. If the owner was to represent to you that that's primarily their intent, and as a practical matter, that's probably what, you know, what's going to happen, you know, that's fine. The concern is when it's imposed as a condition.
I might be a little bit oversensitive about this because I am a practicing realtor, and I do know of several instances in the Antelope Valley where, where investors have bought 16, 20, 25 units in, in a tract and represented they were going to live in all of them, and signed the documents and said that they were going to live in them, and later it was discovered that they, in fact, were investors. There were several cases of that four or five years ago. So I'm a little bit sensitive, and I see, that's one, one real problem I see with this project, is it turning into a, basically a rental unit. And given the location and the vulnerability that it would have, so I'd really like to see it, explore it a little bit further.
But the land use, as, the land use that's underlying on this property is primarily designed for rental units, and if, and the city attorney's, or the deputy city attorney's recommendation is that we do not, we may have the authority to impose it, but we do not have the authority to regulate. We can impose a condition, but we, we couldn't regulate that condition. Would that be about right, Mr. Adams?
On one level, that's, that's obviously the first concern. If it was imposed as a condition, if it's not enforceable, it may be imposed as a condition, but it's not going to be enforceable. The other issue is regardless of whether it's enforceable or not, merely imposing the condition could raise certain issues regarding regulatory takings, for example.
So it's your, your recommendation that we do not impose that condition?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, any more you want to say?
Not at this time.
Okay. Anyone else have anything before we?
Well, I think, uh, he said we couldn't enforce it, but if the developer agreed to, to what we're asking, I mean, that's not us forcing them to do it, is it?
Wouldn't be a condition of approval. I mean, it would be a, a conversation of, of folks. It's not a, the, the point I think that's being made is that, and the recommendation is not to impose it. If the developer wishes to make that kind of a statement, that's fine, but you can't hold him to it. There's no sanction, there's nothing you can, if he changes his mind five years from now, well, changes his mind, can't do anything about it. So I'm sure we'll hear from the developer, and he'll probably have something to say after our little conversations, that's for sure. Anything else from anyone before we hear from the, hear testimony from the applicant? Anyone? All right, let's hear from the applicant, then, please, Mr. Ludiki.
My name is Victor Vera.
Good evening. Welcome.
And our intentions are to sell every unit, and we want to keep the owners in their respective units, and I don't know what else we can do to make sure that this happens forever.
Have anything else you want to tell us about your project, or?
Oh, well, just like I told you when I met with you and staff, that our intentions are to get the younger families in there. You know, like, my son, he's working as a carpenter-famer, his wife is a hairdresser, and this is the kind of owners that we're looking for, for our project, for the startup family, the family, like, I use my son as an example because he's 24 years old, his wife is 24 years old. My son happens to work for me, and he makes $20 an hour. His wife, she's a hairdresser, maybe like $600, $700 a week, and they have one little girl, they're expecting their second child, and seems to me like this kind of project will be suitable for them because it will be like 10, 15 years before they go on to the bigger house, you know, where they can afford a R7,000 or 10,000 square feet lot, single home. But as it is for right now, this will be a, a good startup home for them, getting to the, into the mortgage-paying condition and, you know, start being responsible, work their way up. Feel they are accomplishing something. It's like they have a two-bedroom apartment right now, and they pay $1,200 a month, and they have, they're only allowed to park one car in their complex. Here they will have a two-car garage, two bedrooms, and, and this is what, what we are hoping to attract here in Lancaster.
All right, thank you. There may be some questions. Did you have something?
This may be a little prema, this may be a little premature, but do we know at this point what the asking price for these homes are going to be?
Well, we have to be just as competitive as KB Homes, and they're selling their homes for in the range of 250 to 300. There is no-
And that's with the, the larger lots, though, right?
Uh, well, all the lots are the same size, we just have three different sizes of units, 15, 1750, and 1900.
Okay, thank you.
Square feet.
One question that I have for you, as you mentioned, that your intention is for the first buyers to be owner-occupied rather than investors, is that correct?
Yes.
And what steps are you planning on taking to make sure that that happens?
Well, the, that will be the selling department on, on our part, because we're the developers, and we can only, like, pretty much like yourself, we can only, you know, ask the selling department to make sure they screen the applications and, and go out of their way to make sure these buyers are going to live in their houses.
I've seen purchase contracts in other new development tracts where they actually have part of the, this will be owner-occupied property. Is that going to be part of your purchase contract, or do you know?
Yes, we believe that if you are the owner of your unit, you're gonna take care of your unit, and that's going to keep the project looking good for as long as you live there.
So in answer to the question, is there going to be anything in the purchase contract?
We'll, we'll put something in there that says that they are obligated to live there for as long as they're paying for the mortgage or paying for the house.
Okay, thank you.
I do have another question. In the, the development that we, we did visit yesterday, beautiful landscaping, is, is the landscaping going to be the responsibility of the owner of each unit, or is it going to be the responsibility of a homeowners association?
HOA, the homeowners.
The homeowners association?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, so individuals won't be responsible for planting their own?
They will be responsible for the private area, which they have, you know, in the range of 120 square feet up to 250 depends on which townhomes you purchase. You know, if you're in the corner, you get a bigger space. If you're in the middle, then you get 120, but that little private area, each owner is responsible for there.
Isn't it, isn't it the case, though, Ms. Donovan, that the entire project has to be landscaped to city standards as, as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Whether or not the homeowner is responsible for the rear yard, may or may not be the case, but the initial landscaping has to be installed to city standards on all the landscape areas, front, back, side, everywhere, right?
That's correct.
Anyone else have a question? The applicant? It's not, well, maybe you do. Go ahead.
Uh, the project we were in yesterday was gated. Is the project that will be built in Lancaster, is that going to be gated?
No, it's not. It's, it's not designed to have, um, two entrances where typically you would, you can put a gate, but this one has the units facing the future school, they have, they have their entrance through the street, so it will be difficult to have it gated.
Thank you. Were you involved with the project in Santa Clarita?
No, it's a syntax project.
Oh, it's a syntax project, okay.
All right, anyone else have any questions? The applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any speakers? Mr. Ludiki?
I have two, I believe, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Little.
All right. Hello, Jeff, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Voss, Vice Chairman Woman Smith, and Commissioners, just to delineate a little bit on what Victor was referring to, definitely we're gonna have HOA fees. This is gonna be an owner-operated complex. It's, it's going to be stated in it. We've, we've drawn up the paperwork, and you're correct, in saying there's paperwork that you've seen before that we've done that. We're here agreeing with everything the staff's recommendation, and meeting with Chairman Voss on, on occasion, and we agree. There's been a request for us to meet the architectural design, and we're, we're in agreeance to that. So anything that we have to change to make it look more aesthetically pleasant to the community, we're, we're there. I just wanted to let you know that there is, this is going to be owner-operated, or it's not, it's not up for rental. The price is gonna be higher than expected for a rental. It's going to be in the HOA fees. We want to make sure that it's put up that way. That's the reason the applicant set it up this way. So if there's any questions, I mean, I'd be more than happy, I know our engineer could not be here this evening. He had a small emergency that could not be here, if there's any questions on that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Little. There may be some questions, anyone? No, thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Randy Viall.
Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I attended the last meeting and heard some of the commentary, and I took some of the commentary this evening, and it's nice to hear that the developer is, really has the idea of having these as owned homes as opposed to rentals. We hate to think that we're having a 155-unit apartment building put in just up the street from us. We are, in fact, the closest property owner, unless you count the big house across the street. I'm wondering, though, was a traffic study done relative to increased traffic on Lancaster Boulevard? This is a dirt road that runs from 45th, excuse me, 40th to 50th, and we already have problems with high-speed traffic sometimes coming through there. With this housing development being put in, I'm concerned that there's gonna be increased traffic. I have five kids, kids being what they are, sometimes they like to play out in the dirt road, really don't want any of them to get hit. Another concern that I just happened to think of, I presume there's gonna be a block wall around this complex, and I'm wondering, for obvious reasons, whether the homeowners association dues are gonna include maintenance of that block wall and the graffiti and things that may appear on the outside of that block wall, which will be immediately visible from where we are. It's not gonna be real aesthetic, obviously, it's, it's not gonna help our property values to have this project in here in the first place, but we understand it's gonna be, we just want to make sure that the steps are taken to make them a good neighbor as well as us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speakers? Mr. Ludiki?
I have no other speaker cards on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then, without objection, the public hearing is closed, then we may have some questions of staff. Go ahead.
We gained a lot from this project we visited yesterday. So one, one question I did have, and I hate to revisit this, the trash issue, but it was kind of interesting that when we spoke to one of the, the owners, he indicated that the trash actually wasn't taken out to the main streets, that they were, the trash was actually picked up, well, I don't know if I can point this out from here, but, like, you know what I mean?
Can you, can you rotate the site plan back? Please, thank you.
Laser clock.
Clear enough to identify, please. Need a pointer?
Well, I, if you can, I already explained to Ms. Donovan what-
We got the laser.
(laughing).
Does Ms. Donovan know your, what your, the issue you're raising?
About the, the trash pickup.
Microphone, please.
I don't know how to use this.
What is your question?
I'm very technical.
Just point it.
Don't hit any of us in the face with it. It's not on.
Let me see, it goes directly to Jim's face.
Oh, okay, so-
Just don't put it in Mr. Adams' eye here.
Yes. The trash trucks would go in here, like, into this area? Would there be room in this project for, for trash trucks to come in here, come through here and pick up trash and go out in each area, so you wouldn't have to have the, the trash lined up on the, on the main streets? Do you understand what I'm saying? They, they would actually, he said they actually pull in, they put their, run out in front of their houses, and they actually pull in, come around and, and make those pickups, as opposed to people having to wheel, you know, trash out to the main street and park their-
The, the public hearing is closed, sir. We're addressing our comments to staff. Appreciate it, thank you.
Well, I thought you was-
That's all right, thank you.
I'm looking all over the room, I'm sorry.
So the question, the question would be, and this was raised last meeting, and the solution was to identify trash pickup points on the main street where the owners would wheel their handy-dandy little trash containers out to the main street so the trash trucks wouldn't be driving in and backing out and turn up the roadway in the, in those, in the interior private streets. That be correct? Is that what we, is that what we discussed, and that's the solutions before?
That was so long ago, I'm sorry.
Right, I think the practice is for the trash trucks to go into the private cul-de-sacs and pick up the trash containers. I think the issue was, the commission was concerned about the conflict of the containers being out where people are driving in and out, and so as a result of that, we, the applicant provided the ballbouts along the private streets for the trash dispensers to locate. Okay. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
One question I had is in the last meeting, I believe we also brought up the topic of, is it essential for each resident to have three trash containers? Was that research discovered or not?
Yes, in response to your question, the applicant checked with the trash provider, and they only need two, two containers.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything further from anyone? All right, thank you. So you have the recommendation before you on conditional use permit number 0719 and tentative tract map number 70238. That's your pleasure.
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 0913 approving conditional use permit number 0719 and tentative tract map number 70238, including revised site plan and conditions.
Second?
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? From anyone? Please vote. All right, thank you. The next item is a new public hearing, item three, which is a one-year extension, however, we have a letter asking for that to be rem- However, we have a letter asking for that to be removed. Would that be correct, Mr. Ludicke?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. By way of some background, there has been a bill sitting on the governor's desk for several weeks that would grant an automatic extension to all active maps within the state of California. He signed that legislation...what date? On July 15. As a result of that, all active tentative maps within the city...well, within the city and the state actually receive an automatic statutory two-year extension. As a result of that, and the fact that it's urgency legislation, which means it's immediately effective, the applicant has requested to withdraw their application for an extension.
All right. So we just don't hear it?
Should they take an action of some kind? Just not hear it? You can essentially just not hear it.
All right. So without objection, item three is removed from the agenda. Item four is conditional use permit 0904, which is...Scooners Patio Grill. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter. And we did receive, I believe, a letter indicating acceptance of all the conditions of approval. I believe we did. We did, from Mr. Ledesma. So however, does anyone wish to...does anyone wish to hear our staff report on this? Guess not. All right. The public hearing is open. Do we have speakers, Mr. Ludicke? I guess we do. I'm sorry. Well, wait a minute. The applicant would have an opportunity to offer their comments if you wish. You don't have to, but you're welcome to if you wish.
We do have one speaker opposing, Mr. Chairman, on item four.
All right. Then if there is a speaker in opposition, we'll hear a staff report then, please.
Thank you, Chairman Vos, Commissioners. The applicant, Scooners Patio Grill, Inc., is requesting a conditional use permit for the onsite sale and consumption of alcohol in a proposed 3,640-square-foot restaurant. The applicant has requested a type 47 license for onsite sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits from the California State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Based on the floor plan and discussions with the applicant, the proposed project meets the definition of a bona fide restaurant. The code defines a bona fide restaurant as a business enterprise which is conducted or proposed to be conducted in compliance with several different requirements, such as kitchen and dining area that constitute permanent and identifiable portions of the business, a printed menu, not less than 51% of the sales from food and non-alcoholic beverage, and at least one full-time cook. The main hours of operation would be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. On-site security will be provided from the shopping center property owner through privately contracted security personnel for the parking lot. And the applicant is proposed to provide closed-circuit video cameras for the restaurant. Operation of the restaurant will be conducted by well-trained staff in a manner that will maintain a pleasant dining experience and enhance ambiance. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Lancaster Station was not opposed to the issuance of the conditional use permit based on a conducted investigation and the applicant's agreement to the conditions that are attached. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the proposed alcohol use for the proposed restaurant because it meets all of the requirements of the zone and will not adversely affect nearby residences or businesses. The alcohol sales are related to the function of the proposed use and will provide a unique dining experience to this area of Lancaster. That concludes my presentation. If you have any additional questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. We may have. Anyone have any questions before we hear from the speakers? So we do give the applicant an opportunity to offer their testimony if they choose. Mr. Ledesma? No?
Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, I have nothing to say. I have my restrictions from the city and from my lease, and I'm fine with it all. Unless you have any questions of me, I'm good.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do you have a question, Larry? No? All right. Thank you. All right. Do we have another speaker, please?
Julie Pleasance.
Say that again, please.
Julie...I think it's Pleasance.
Good evening, and welcome.
Chairman Vos, Vice Chairman Smith, Commissioners, Staff, I'm here tonight to ask you a vote against approving this conditional use permit at this particular location for yet another business that's going to sell alcohol in my neighborhood. With a grocery store, a drugstore, liquor store, convenience store, bar, and two other restaurants, all selling alcohol in a quarter-mile stretch of Avenue L, this is not an amenity that the area is lacking. I teach students that live less than a mile from this location in the trend housing tract. As you may recall, a community policing initiative over a year ago brought dramatic improvements to the neighborhood. And so for this past year, it meant that more of my students felt safe enough to walk to school, ride bikes to school, and visit each other's houses later in the afternoons. They stopped complaining to me about fights on their streets late at night and house parties getting out of hand. I'm not here tonight because I'm anti-business. I'm not necessarily even anti-alcohol. But I don't believe that our neighborhood needs another place with parking lot fights, broken bottles, and motorcycles with modified mufflers roaring down the streets after last call, which has been influenced by my experience at the prior location on 15th Street West. I would prefer another location for this particular endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have additional speakers? All right. Without objection, then, the public hearing is closed. And anyone have questions of staff?
Yes. This particular location is going to be a bar and a restaurant, not a dance hall.
It is a restaurant. They have not applied for any type of entertainment use, so there would not be any dancing included in this application. This is for them to be able to serve alcohol in conjunction with the restaurant use.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? I had some questions that I'd raised at our staff briefing and as it related to the outside patio dining area and what appeared to me to be an encroachment into or close to, right up to the parking lot and the handicap access and ramps and so forth. Now, I know the process, the design that's presented to us is preliminary. I understand that. And ultimately, the tenant improvements and site plan design would have to go through the proper permitting process with engineering and so forth and building and safety. The concern I'm raising relates to the Title 24 access, handicap access, circulation, those kinds of things. It appears to me that the way, at least the site plan measures, it's some 28 feet from the front door, if you will, or the front wall, I should say, to the edge of the patio, the eastern edge of the patio, which, when you measure it, gets right into the sidewalk area. So maybe the design is...maybe the scale on the design is off, but I'd be concerned about that. I don't know if anybody's taken a look at that. So why doesn't...why don't somebody explain to us, then, what the applicant has to go through? Assuming the conditional use permit is approved, what steps does the applicant oblige to complete before they can occupy the space as it relates to this site plan?
If the question is what process they would go through for a building permit, yes, they would...if they had to submit for tenant improvements, that would be one of the items that would be checked by the building and safety department, would be whether or not they meet those requirements for ADA access. I don't know that we have enough detailed plans to be able to really determine that at this point.
It's a little hard to determine based on what's before us.
Yes. It would have to be detailed plans, and that would be part of the plan check process to show that they do meet the Title 24.
I guess the question I...the reason I'm raising the question is because when the project was originally developed and the buildings were originally placed on the site and the site plan was approved and the circulation element for pedestrian traffic as well as automobile circulation and parking and those kinds of things was determined and it was built and approved. Now, the proposal is to encroach some 2,500 square feet into what currently is sidewalk and planter areas, landscape areas, I guess, including some trees. So that's the reason I'm raising the issue. I'm concerned about the Title 24 access that it currently exists and how it's going to...how that will be dealt with. Because, for instance, if the...what I would call the barrier, probably a wrought iron fence, 48 inches high maybe, around this patio area, if that encroaches right up to the sidewalk and to the handicap ramp, where are those folks who parked there, how are they going to get access to the remainder of the buildings up to and including this tenant? You know? So based on this site plan, I don't think it works. But if...but our approval of this conditional use permit doesn't ca...the answer I'm looking for doesn't cast this site plan in stone. This site plan must go through an approval process, including Title 24 access, right?
Yes. Actually, there's a number of different agencies that would look at the tenant improvement plans. Not only does the city's building division look at it from the standpoint of the things you just described, the health department from the county is going to look at it from the standpoint of food service and health-related issues, as well as the fire department in terms of access and emergency services ability. So there...at any point in that process, and it's fairly typical of...certainly with new development and even with modifications to this, we often find that there are things that have to shift somewhat as it goes through that final analysis. That may be as a result of a health department requirement. It may be the result of even a fire code that someone finds later doesn't allow some amount of area to be as it's described in the preliminary plans. But from the conditional use permit standpoint, what you're essentially doing is saying that, you know, we find that the allowance to sell alcohol here is approved. We want the plans to be substantially in conformance with what we have approved. In other words, you know, someone couldn't show up later and say, "Well, you know what? This tenant space really doesn't work. We're moving to another one. But since I have a CUP, I guess I'll not bother." So I think that most of the details that you're concerned about are dealt with adequately through the subsequent reviews. The larger issues, which are certainly appropriateness of the use, general amount of parking available, things of that type, are within the purview of the conditional use permit review.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments from anyone?
I just had a quick question. If you can help educate me, on the patio area that's open around the outside, what would be the requirements for that...the fencing, the gating, whatever, would keep people from coming in or going out from that area?
The applicant, having operated a similar facility, may be able to give you a little bit more in terms of detail from alcoholic beverage control standpoint. But I will tell you that there has to be some kind of a barrier and a definition that essentially defines where the limits of alcohol service and consumption will be on the property. Now, beyond that, I don't know whether that's left, in some cases, to the discretion of the state ABC or, you know, if they kind of look at things on a case-by-case basis. But every one of these kinds of situations that we've dealt with, where you have patio, open area that's used for dining, there does have to be some kind of control on it in terms of access and so forth if alcoholic beverages are consumed or served in that outdoor area. The applicant, as I said, having dealt with this at their prior business, may be able to give you a better rundown on the specifics.
It would appear from the site plan, the ingress and egress is through the main entry door on the north end of the building. And the...and access into the patio area would be controlled from inside the building. Access, ingress, and egress to the patio area would be controlled through the inside of the building. So it doesn't appear, other than possibly emergency access, I doubt, that there's any direct access from the outside end of the patio area, other than through the building.
Right. Yeah, that's what I saw. So my biggest concern was if this is a three-and-a-half-foot wrought iron fence, what prevents somebody of age to go in and purchase some alcoholic beverages, go out to the patio, and then their buddies jump over the fence? You know, that type of thing is what I'm concerned about the most. So I think Brian answered that question as well as we can for now, without knowing details.
Operational.
Right.
All right. Anyone have anything else before we move on? Anyone? All right. Thank you. All right. We have a recommendation before us on conditional use permit 0904. It's your pleasure, please.
I recommend that we adopt resolution number 0925 approving conditional use permit number 0904.
Second? Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Please vote. Thank you. The next item is item five, which is an amendment to Title 17 of the zoning ordinance of the Lancaster Municipal Code. And that's been recommended that we continue that to the August 17, 2009, meeting. Do we have any speakers on that item?
I have. I'm not sure. Yes, we have one.
All right, then. The public hearing is open on the recommendation to continue this item to the August 17, 2009. Who's the speaker, please?
Nicole.
Ms. Parsons.
Hi.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. You guys just look so, like, down, and I just wanted to come and tell you guys that you guys are really doing a good job, and at least I appreciate you. And I don't know if other people appreciate you because you guys are doing such a good job. So let's talk on number five. I just got here. I'm glad I came at this time. Wind energy. Well, so then I'd like to maybe advise you of what's going on. Right now, we're doing something with climate change and global warming, and we're trying to... to, the president says cut that, I say something about the same. And so that, so you, I don't know if you guys are aware, but that the environmental impact report is going to be really important to making, to making the situation of global warming and climate change improve. And if you guys had any questions on global warming or climate change, I'd be happy to answer anything on it, if you had any questions, any questions that you wanted to find out about. Okay, well, well then, okay, let me tell you just a little bit about why the EIR is probably going to be in the, in the quality, it's going to be.
The matter's before us as a continuation of a Title 17, has nothing to do with an environmental impact report, but you can certainly proceed and say whatever you like.
Okay, well, the wind, okay, well, let's talk on the wind. The wind is part of the climate. Well, anyways, right now, basically, the water, not water, I'm sorry, like grease, there's not, there's no reason, grease is not, is not biodegradable. Another thing, it's not biodegradable, is styrofoam. And then water. So basically, everything that we're fighting for, everyone's fighting for, is, all we have is right now. So, so, so we're to use those things in our benefit instead of styrofoam? And so that sort of goes to human energy. And so that's all I like to say right now, human energy.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Okay. So be careful when you look at the EIRs and the sequels and people are saying, "Oh, it's really easy mitigable," but it's not, because that's going to save our planet and people are a very important part of it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers, Mr. Ludiki?
No other speakers, Mr. Chairman.
So then, without objection, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Kabat, I just want to say thank you guys for letting me.
Public hearing is closed, thank you. So we have a recommendation to continue this matter till April 17. Could I have a motion, please? Excuse me, August 17. April, August, hey?
I'll make a motion that we continue amendment to Title 17 zoning ordinance of the Lancaster Municipal Code to the Planning Commission Regular Meeting of August 17, 2009.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Rather than April, huh? Okay, fine.
It's continued seven, nothing.
Thank you. Next item is item six, which is the housing element revision to the general plan housing element. Mr. Ludiki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just by way of some background, you may recall that about a year ago, you actually voted a recommendation on the city's housing element to its general plan that was ultimately adopted by the city council and was sent to state HCD for their review. One of the, one of the steps, and it's the only element of the general plan that has to go through this, this step, our goal was to get certification of that housing element through the state Housing and Community Development Department. They responded to us with a number of concerns and questions in regards to the element and its current form, indicated there were a number of things that we had to address in order to deal with the certification issue. I'm going to ask Chun Ying, who's the associate planner, to kind of go over those with you and detail a little bit more of what HCD's expectations are.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, Commissioners. I did have some slides prepared that accompany some of the things I'm going to say, so I'm You have before you the revised housing element, as Plan Director Bron Ludiki mentioned, you guys did go over last year, got comments back from HCD. The copy you've received incorporates the revision that the state's acquiring. So just very briefly, this is a state mandated general plan element and addresses the housing needs for planning period 2006 to 2014. The previous version was adopted by the city council on August 12, 2008, and we've received corrections from HCD in November of 2008. These are the two main issues that HCD had with the housing element that we submitted. They would like provision of adequate sites and development of these sites by right. And there's also an issue of the provision of transitional and supportive housing by right. I'll go in detail what that actually means. So first, the provision of adequate sites. The state requires jurisdictions to provide adequate sites for development of housing at all income levels. So our allocation is roughly in the range of 12,800 and the allocation for low income and very low income is at 5,133. So what the city has to do is find enough sites, either vacant or underutilized, to accommodate this number of units. And based on our general plan, we do have enough multifamily zone sites, approximately 326 acres worth, to accommodate roughly 5,510 units, which is over the allocation of 5,133. However, the state would like to see that the development of these sites be processed administratively, meaning in-house. Currently, we have a conditional use permit requirement for multifamily proposals that's adjacent to single-family residential use. They would like to see that removed. In addition, they would like for developers of these sites to achieve a maximum density by right. Currently, we grant them additional units in exchange for the provision of amenities and they would like the removal of that requirement. Another issue that the state had with our housing element is with transitional and supportive housing. Senate Bill Two was passed and it requires jurisdictions to allow transitional and supportive housing as residential uses subject only to those restrictions that apply to other residential uses of the same type in the same zone. In other words, we can't require any additional permitting for transitional and supportive housing types beyond what we normally allow for the exact same use. The following slides are some of the specific actions that we've included in the revised housing element to reflect the changes that the state has required. And I'll go through these very briefly. There are specific actions, 6.1.1D, which talks about the amendment to the zoning ordinance removing the requirement for a conditional use permit for the development of multifamily projects. I've actually revised this today beyond what you have before you, just slightly. The new language for 6.1.1D, the staff is recommending, is to amend the zoning ordinance to remove the requirement for a conditional use permit for the development of multifamily projects in the medium-density residential and high-density residential zones. Our multifamily development proposals in these zones would be processed administratively, such as a site plan review application. The difference between this one and the one that you have before you is that this one calls out the zones, which would enable you to still review CUPs for multifamily projects in commercial zones, mixed-use zones, whereas the previous wording appeared to be a catch-all and we wanted to make sure that the commission still has, still had the ability to review multifamily projects in zones other than MDR and HDR. The MDR and HDR is called out so that we can still meet the state's requirement. This is another specific action that was included in the revised housing element. It's to amend the zoning ordinance to remove the requirement for amenities in exchange for an increase in density. This specific action was included in the revised housing element. This one talks about the provision, I'll just read it, "In order to encourage and facilitate housing for the homeless, amend the zoning ordinance to allow by administrative review, parentheses, director's review application, the construction of emergency shelters on properties within the light industrial then use designation, subject to development standards applied to any other use in the L.I. zone except those listed in Government Code 65583."
So, for instance, since the city council took an action to impose a light industrial buffer around the prison on three sides, more or less, this would, the opportunity would avail itself for this, for this use?
It would.
Ah, great, thank you.
Again, this is another specific action that we included in response to Senate Bill Two, which required jurisdictions to call out a specific zone to allow for emergency shelters by right. This is another inclusion to the revised housing element. This one pertains to the transitional and supportive housing as discussed previously and to allow them subject only to those restrictions that apply to other residential uses of the same type in the same zone. And this is another specific action. This one talks about a reasonable accommodation ordinance, which is another correction that HCD required of us. It asks for us to adopt and implement, and adopt and implement a reasonable accommodation ordinance providing a procedure for considering requests for reasonable accommodation pursuant to the Federal Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988. Individuals with disabilities would have a process to make requests for reasonable accommodation in regard to relief from the various then use and zoning regulations and procedures separate from a variance or a conditional use permit. So those five specific actions were included in the revised housing element reflecting the corrections that HCD has mandated us to do. And this concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Jacobs?
Can you, let's talk about group homes, transitional homes. How would the addition to this, to the housing element affect, affect what we, in essence, have right now, which are no regulations?
Well, currently, this is a, I'll call up a common example. If somebody was proposing a group home for six persons or more, they would have to come to us and obtain a director's review application. And we would take a look at their proposed use and, you know, apply any conditions that may apply. What this would do is we would no longer be able to require that the director's review application, we would have to allow that use as any other use in the same zone. So if someone has a house in a single-family zone, it's got five bedrooms, you know, they can use that house for that purpose, you know, and would only be subject to, say, building and safety requirements or health and safety requirements.
Assuming we approve this and assuming that we then modify the zoning ordinance at a subsequent time, that's the assumption, right?
Right. In other words, in, currently, for group homes six or fewer, we don't require any application, but the six or more basically goes out the window and we would have to treat that as the same as any other residential use. That's, at least that is what Senate Bill Two is requiring jurisdictions to do.
So you, so what you're imposing is the modifications you're recommending are in conformance with state law?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in reference to that, the city in the last couple of years has already made some modifications in its business licensing and other procedures in regards to these same things, but we do have some additional modification and obviously it's going to require some consultation with legal counsel as to bring the remaining bits of our, of our development codes and zoning codes into conformance with the, with the requirements of the Senate bill.
So are you saying then that even if we pass this as it's written today, the city is looking at still making some requirements of these types of, and I like to call them businesses, as opposed to?
Yeah, essentially, what, what we're saying in terms of the housing element is we're saying the city's, the city's going to comply with the, with the adopted legislation of the state. You know, we don't have the specifics how we're going to do that yet, but we're committing to that sometime during this, during this upcoming housing element period that we're covered, which is 2006 to 2014. Yeah, you would, you would see for, I think, most of these, some kind of a subsequent ordinance or other regulation that you would have to make a recommendation on to the city council. The, the issue of the conditional use permits, things of that type would require amendments to the code. I'm not sure about the reasonable accommodation procedure, that may be a little bit different. That, to kind of give you an example, let's suppose that somebody had a situation where they needed a handicapped ramp to go to the front door, but perhaps the zoning code doesn't allow the encroachment of that into a yard area. The city needs to set some procedure to allow that reasonable accommodation where somebody says, "I need, I need, you know, a handicapped access ramp to get to my front door and your code is preventing me from building it." That's an example of what we would need to deal with in those circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
So over the next 18 months or so, we'll be spending more time together working on the modifications, the zoning regulations?
Yeah, some of these you may see sooner, some of them you may see later as part of the, the development code adoptions that we'll go through. I think it's important and I want to highlight again for, for the benefit of the commission, the way that we have, have structured this, in order to comply with HCD's requests, we have recommended policies and specific actions that would essentially remove the conditional use permit process in zones that are specifically designed, almost exclusively to accommodate moderate and high-density residential housing. We have not recommended that, obviously, for the city's commercial zones where we do allow higher-density housing through a conditional use permit process now. We have not recommended it prospectively for the mixed-use zone, which you will see at some point. see at some point as a, as another development zone. And the reason that we are not having to do that is because we have sufficient sites available within those moderate and high-density residential zones, that we don't need to rely on the land that's, that's designated under the now-adopted general plan for mixed use, uh, or if we had some commercial areas that we were looking at doing, uh, use permits on, um, we, we can count that housing towards meeting our need, but we don't have to, uh, go through the process of removing the conditional use permit requirement, which I, I don't think would be a wise move in either a mixed-use or a commercial zone.
Benefit to, benefit to the community and, uh, the city as a whole, uh, to have our general plan housing element certified by HCD is?
Um, the, the, there are a couple of them. One is, is, uh, the fact that, um, if you have a certified housing element, um, and you are challenged by developer, by a housing advocacy group, or somebody who says your element, or your city is, is unfairly restricting, uh, the provision of affordable housing, um, having a certified element is essentially, uh, I, I can't remember the legal term offhand, but there's a presumption that, that you are in compliance with what the state laws are in regards to, to affordable housing and so forth. In other words, if you don't have that, you don't have that legal presumption on your side. Uh, it puts you at more risk, uh, in the event of a challenge. Um, there are cities that don't have certified housing elements, quite a few of them, in LA County, I will, I will add, um, but, uh, you, you do hang out there a little ways on that issue. The second thing, and probably more important from our standpoint, the city, um, has been very successful in, uh, attracting and, and having developers who, who've received, uh, grant money, loans, other kinds of things through various programs for infrastructure that involves revitalization areas of the city, some of our downtown effort that you're seeing. Um, many of these programs are competitive, um, meaning that you have to essentially come out on top as the project to get the funding for it. One of the factors that the state often looks at, or is included as a, as a point, uh, totler, is, does the jurisdiction have a certified housing element? Jurisdictions with certified housing elements have a better chance at, at obtaining those financing, uh, and, and other mechanisms, and for areas, uh, in our city where we're looking, in some cases, at some transformation, um, that could be a critical difference between us and somebody else.
All right, very good, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Do we have any speakers on this matter?
Nicole Parsons.
Ms. Parsons.
Um, I, what, what that says is, um, I know, because Senate Bill is, um, is sort of, is sort of for, I guess, um, for, well, I'll tell you, okay? Um, I didn't, I didn't know it was on the agenda, and, um, Mr. Cabal, I've been working with him, just, and I just, that's what I said, I wanted to thank you guys, so I've, um, sort of dislenced myself, and, um, and it seems like I've been here for a long time, and I've had a lot of trouble, um, but I'll, I'll tell you the truth on that, um, that, that, the, the disadvantaged part is for disadvantaged economic developers, and so that, um, we could be, um, so that we could be, uh, so we're not economically challenged. And it says, um, use us in, in your development, um, and the transitional homes is really workforce housing, and, um, it's not fully developed, uh, yet, and, and, um, there was a, there was a program in there too, which is, it, it made, like, headlines of, um, it was Hope Six Program, and that was, like, mitigation, um, method for a non-compliant, uh, families, for, uh, and low, and, um, and for low-income families that were non-compliant. Um, so, really, so, uh, me and, like, Ms. Marquez, um, I gave her the, um, I gave her, because she wanted to do something with real estate, I gave her the, the administrative portion of the, the research grant, and then, that's how I believe that the redevelopment for the rehab of the homes came, and I did, I did the, the portion for the housing, the housing, um, 2008. And that's why, that's why it's, um, the Senate Bill and all the adoptions were, um, after October, because the award, I guess, the, the point total came up in October 1st. And so, um, really, I have all the, all the details of that program, and really, it, it looks like it's asking you to let me, um, um, finish developing that program, because I, I wrote, like, the synopsis and the scenarios, and they really liked it. And I'm, the, the Senate Bill is, the President says, "Let disadvantaged and disabled people, um, be economic developers, because they can do good stuff."
Thank you for your comments.
Can I have an answer? Can I have an answer on this, sir? Or did you want me to talk to you in private?
Thank you for your comments, your time's expired.
But that's fine, but, you know, this is, this is the public.
Excuse me, ma'am, your time has expired.
I understand, sir.
Please, please sit down.
I'm a, this is my project, I developed that, you can.
Mr. Luticki, do we have a staff member can, uh, remove Ms. Parsons?
Nicole, can you please?
Okay. See, that's human energy. You guys can tell me the number-one contributor to, uh, CO2.
Ma'am, please leave the room. Please leave the room, thank you.
I'm mad. I'm really mad. Well, I don't think the President, whoever, I'm really mad.
You want to make a call, Brian?
Never called my time before, but, you know, that's fine.
It's, it's time to make a call.
I'm out. I don't even want to be here, for the people.
I suggest, Mr. Luticki, that at every meeting, we have a deputy present.
Will arrange for that.
Thank you. All right, any further comments from the public on this matter?
I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Then, without objection, public hearing is closed, and, uh, we have a recommendation before us, but your pleasure, please.
I'll make a motion, um, on the general plan housing element, and approve resolution number 09-18, recommending to the City Council approval of an update of the general plan housing element in accordance with the corrections provided by State Department of Housing and Community Development.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments? It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Motion passes seven, zero.
All right, next item is director's announcements, Mr. Luticki?
Uh, couple of them. Um, number one, as I'm sure you're all aware, uh, the City Council is scheduled tomorrow to take up the issue of the 60th and L cases. Um, they also called up both conditional use permits and, uh, the tentative parcel map for review, uh, at that same time. The second, uh, announcement, um, you've seen on occasion, uh, this lady over here, Tess Epling, um, I'd just like to say that she has been fortunate enough to get a promotion within the city. She will be leaving the Planning Department to go to redevelopment, economic development, and although we will miss her, we congratulate her and wish her well.
Congratulations, Tess. All right, commission agenda, anyone have anything they wish to offer this evening? Anyone? All right. Public business from the floor, non-agendized items. This portion of the agenda has allowed an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Member of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Do we have any non-agendized item speakers?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we stand adjourned till Monday, August 10th, at 5:30 PM, in the Planning Large Conference Room.